...of March, it's 9:00 AM. We're at the Palm Coast City Hall for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Could you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your bond and friendship, saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo is excused. Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Agenda item number one. First item is the approval of the minutes of the March 1st City Council meeting and the March 8th City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item two, proclamation recognizing the month of March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Mr. Nobiel.
Jenny Hack. Nice to see you again.
So much.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Whereas multiple myeloma, the second most common blood cancer worldwide and the fastest rising hematologic cancer, is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur at multiple sites. And whereas multiple myeloma currently affects nearly 96,000 people in the United States and about 750,000 people worldwide with an estimated 30,330 cases expected to be diagnosed in 2016 and 12,650 losing their battle this year. And whereas, once a disease of the elderly, it is now found increasingly in people under 65. And whereas, because myeloma is a rare disease that can be delayed diagnosis, leading to delayed treatment, for this reason, an increased awareness of myeloma for clinicians and the general public will lead to early diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. And whereas, continued investment and innovation is critical to achieve early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for myeloma patients. And whereas, although we have seen important advances in the last decade, there is still no cure for myeloma. And whereas, the city of Palm Coast is committed to increasing awareness of myeloma and encouraging private efforts to enhance research, funding, and education programs, now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of March 2016 be officially designated as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast. Signed this 15th day of March 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for their support. I appreciate it.
Thank you and your group for all of your citizens.
I just wanted to tell you one thing. My name is Jenny Hack and I have multiple myeloma. I first want to thank Mayor Nets and his city council for attending the fundraiser last Saturday, and it was very, very well received. It was a success beyond our wildest dreams. I really appreciate your coming. And thank you all again for proclaiming March Multiple Myeloma Month. We really appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You wait up doing it. We're gonna have you come up here.
Yeah, follow me. Follow me.
Wasn't the Ides of March a rock band in the '70s?
They had a song called "Vehicle."
I'm the friendly stranger in the black sedan. Why don't you walk inside my car?
He got me on that one.
Pictures handy. I'm a lovable man and I could take you to the nearest star.
These gentlemen are gonna stand up.
Thank you.
Today's election.
What was that last point?
I'm very aware.
You're gonna look pretty. There's one here can manage that. The rest of us gotta.
Squeeze in over this one.
I really appreciate it.
Okay. We're centered now? We're better centered?
Pretty well. Do you got my glasses? Jenny, you wanna hold out some?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
You can hold it. Whoops, having difficulties. Come on, boy.
Okay. Ready? We're gonna do a couple. One, two, three.
Those are for IMF. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your work.
Appreciate it. You have no idea. You're saving lives, is all I can say. And you're saving lives.
Month. Shipley.
Whereas water is a basic and essential need of everything, of every living creature. And whereas, the St. John's River Water Management District is working together with the state of Florida, other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas, April is typically a dry month in Florida when water demands are increased. And whereas, the St. John River Water Management District encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas, every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by conserving water and thus promoting a healthy economy and community. And whereas, the St. John's Water Management District is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation members and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. And whereas, the city of Palm Coast has participated in the fourth annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation and encourages all residents to take the pledge online at www.mywaterpledge.com. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, does hereby declare the month of April as Water Conservation Month, adopted March 15, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did want to make a comment about the mayor's challenge. If you go online to sign up and make a pledge, don't do it until after April 1st. You won't get credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would encourage everyone to participate in this pledge online. Last year, Palm Coast placed seventh in the nation based on the number of our citizens who were willing to take a pledge to conserve water. Let's see if we can't do even better this year. Come on, Bill. Get in the middle. Hold your water.
We'll do a couple. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Section 14.02, to provide an amended definition for bottle clubs. Amending the Unified Land Development Code, Section 3.0106, to prohibit bottle clubs within all zoning districts of the city of Palm Coast, Florida. Amending Section 7-1B, hours of operation of Chapter 7 alcoholic beverages. Code of Ordinances of the city of Palm Coast to strike the reference to bottle clubs. This ordinance provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and provides for an effective date. This is second reading, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, as our favorite attorney said, it is second reading. You've heard this many times over the last few months. We believe it is ready for final adoption. There's been no changes since the last reading at your last meeting a couple of weeks ago. Staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel questions. Seeing none, we're open to meeting with the public and from the public, which should be heard on agenda item number four. If so, come up to the podium, give us your name. Please limit your contribution to three minutes. Anyone approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shipley. Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, a resolution approving a final plat, Grand Landings Phase II-A replat. Mr. Landon.
This is kind of an ongoing saga, where they continue to needing, need to create more lots because more houses are being built out in Grand Landings. So, Constance will walk us through the latest plat they're proposing.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm presenting Grand Landings Phase II-A subdivision. It is a 2.31 acre site that's located north of Grand Landings Parkway and at the intersection of South Cooper's Hawk Way, where there is currently existing 91 lots. The future land use is residential, and the zoning is master planned development. This is a representation of the plat. It is 10 single-family residential lots with a private right-of-way. The minimum lot width is 50 feet and the minimum lot size is 6,250 square feet. And the plat meets all the requirements of the Land Development Code and the Master Plan Development Agreement. A subdivision site development permit was issued in September 2015 for Phase II. The applicant will provide a cash bond for 120% of the estimated cost of improvements for those improvements that have not been constructed as of yet. Staff is recommending approval of the Grand Landings Phase II plat, authorizing mayor to execute the plat subject to the condition of the city approving and accepting the cash bond prior to final plat recordation. And I will mention that we have already reviewed the bond and will be accepting it within either today or the next day.
That it?
That concludes.
Counsel questions. Seeing none, we're open to meeting from the public and from the public, which should be heard on agenda item number five.
Jack Cowell, Palm Coast. When they say it's a private street, does that mean it's a gated community?
Got an answer for you. Next speaker.
Good morning, George Mail, Palm Coast. According to the map, it seems that the road circles to the right. Is this just the beginning of a larger development, future use, or is it going to end at a cul-de-sac there?
Got an answer for you. Next speaker.
My name is Jerry Finley. Finley Engineering Group, 5531 South Ridgewood, Port Orange, and I'm the engineer for the Yes, it is a gated community, and yes, there are additional lots that will be developed. I think it's about 45 in that particular section that will be developed, and additional 35 beyond the 10 right there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of the applicant, applicant's engineer. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the public, the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Yes, the answer is it will be a gated community, and yes, there will be an additional 35 lots, totaling 45, give or take. Okay. Back to city council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item six, appoint one member to fill the vacancy on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee. We have one position and two applicants. Do we have a ballot?
Yes.
Thank you. Be part of your pen, Mr. Mayor. Certainly. Thank you.
We have a tie.
Where's Jason when we need him?
May I recommend that there is no hurry on this, and you're welcome to wait until the next meeting to break the tie.
Acceptable, everyone?
Yes.
We'll wait till the next meeting. Otherwise, this could go on all afternoon.
Yes.
Okay. This brings us to the consent agenda items seven through 11. Like to offer the opportunity to the public to speak on any of these items before council acts on them en masse. If you'd like to have one item removed, you can bring that to the attention of council, who may or may not choose to remove it from the agenda. Any from the public wish to be heard on agenda items seven through 11?
Seven and nine.
Seven and nine. You'd like to speak on them?
No, I want to hear what you can say.
Okay. Anything else? Council, is there a motion to approve items eight, 10, and 11?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number seven, Mr. Landon.
This is another grant opportunity for the Palm Coast Art Foundation for the Performing Arts Center that is currently under construction with their outdoor venue right now. This is a state grant, and the state requires it to stay at least for 10 years as the purpose of their grant, which is for this outdoor amphitheater type setting. And so it has to have a deed restriction that it has to stay in that, or in that use, or else the state gets their money back. I mean, it makes sense. They're not going to give you money and then have you go some other direction. So that's all this is. This is the second grant with the second similar type deed restriction on the property.
Counsel, any questions on agenda item number seven? Any from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number seven?
Jack Cowell, Palm Coast. If this is a state grant, why does it come to the city? If they don't follow the grant's ideas, what does the city have to do with it? And that's what I don't understand. If it's a state thing, what does the city, why is the city involved? And if they don't meet their requirements, how does the city get, what does the city get from it? They get the land back, or they? That's all I want to know. Thank you very much.
We'll get an answer to your question. Next speaker. Speaker. Close the public portion of the meeting. If it's a state grant, why does the city get involved? Mr. Reichman, you would handle that. Mr. Landon, you would handle that.
Well, I probably can handle it fine. The city owns the property. It's city-owned property. We have a long-term lease on it for, with the Performing Arts Foundation. So, the deed restriction requires city approval because it is a city asset, city property. The purpose is, once again, the agreement is between the foundation and the state, but because we own the property, they want to make sure we're in agreement with the fact it's going to stay as a performing arts venue for the next 10 years because that's what they're putting their money into.
Further to that, in the lease, in the long-term lease, there is a reversion clause that if the arts center ceases to use that for the designated purposes, the lease is terminated in favor of the city who continues to own the property.
Right.
So, okay. Is there a motion on agenda item number seven?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that section. Agenda item number nine, resolution amending the city of Palm Coast fund balance policy. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this item?
We want to hear what you can say.
You want it explained? Okay. We'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Mr. Landon, can you explain the amendment or the resolution to the fund balance policy?
From a practical standpoint, it doesn't change anything, but the Florida Office of Insurance Regulation has a policy that if you are self-funded, which we are with health insurance, that you should have reserves of at least three months' worth of anticipated claims. We have more than that, but our current policy states that it would be 50% of the difference between the expected total cost, or the maximum cost and extraryal expected cost, if I'm saying that correctly. Basically, it's about the same, but because the state has a standard or a policy, Chris Quinn, our finance director, is recommending that we use the state language so that we're consistent with the experts at the state. Once again, it doesn't change how much we have in reserve, it just changes the wording to be consistent.
Back to city council, is there a motion on agenda item number nine?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to item D, which is public participation. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any not, any item not on today's agenda. Come up to the podium, give us your name. Please limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good morning. Robert McDonald, 38, Richfield Land, Palm Coast. I was wondering if the city council has discussed the item that I brought up at the last month's meeting about changing, or at least tweaking, the code enforcement ordinances which require, which would require a resident to actually come into city hall and physically sign a complaint, especially in the code violation, rather than just being done anonymously. Thank you.
Thank you. We got an answer to your question. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. McDonald has requested an additional two minutes, and I'm asking the council if they would approve that.
The council concurrence? Mr. McDonald, you have five minutes total.
Thank you. Good morning. I came to speak to you this morning about something that's very important to you because I see you speaking about it all the time, and the city manager, and that's safety. Last August, at the very first meeting of the county commissioners, I went and spoke to them about the Matanzas Woods interchange. And after having done some research on it from just some things that I had been in tune with, what I found out was that we have an entrance, ramp A and a ramp B, which is an exit from a federal highway that is being constructed now. And the mouth of those inputs to the highway and exits is anywhere from 150 feet wide to 110 feet wide. I made a complaint, or talked to the engineer about this thing. I didn't get anywhere with the county. I did talk to the engineer at Record, Brian, private agency that actually designed this. They agreed, and they produced what are known as pedestrian islands. And so, in the mid, if you can imagine, you're crossing an entrance ramp to a federal highway that's 150 feet wide, their solution was to give you an island to hide on so that somebody wouldn't hit you. So, I didn't think that was quite enough. So, I looked into it a little bit further. I took it even so far as to talk to Ron DeSantis's office and trying to get the federal government involved in it to find out if there was some way that we could do something better for our students that we essentially have made, or now require to walk. Because when you put the overpass in, there is a state law that says that you must walk to school if it's within two miles. And so those kids have to access, you know, by their own means. So what we did is we gave them a pedestrian right-of-way that was not interfered with at all when they had the new, with the new bridge. And so consequently, for a couple of years now, since 2011, they've been going back and forth to school without having to be interfered with by exit and on-ramps 495. Now, the reason I bring all this up to you is that you're extending the old kings. And what I do see and I want to commend you on is the fact that you guys got a stoplight in there with pedestrian lighting and everything else so that you can safely cross there. So if you're a student and you're at Matanzas High School and you're going home, okay, the first intersection you come up to is the new one that you're building, stoplight pedestrian crossing. The next two that you come to, about 150 yards up the road, will be the entrance and the exit to the highway, which have stop signs and absolutely no consideration for pedestrians at all. Now, when I spoke to the FDOT, what they said is that in a couple of years, they could look at this again with something in the state known as a stoplight warrant. Okay? What that means is they want to study the statistics, okay, of what's going, what happens at that interchange. Folks, I know you don't want any statistics at that interchange. And so that's why I'm here today to ask you to intercede, because you're the only guys who can do anything about this, okay? The feds don't have any rules for it. The state is not inclined to do anything about it, and the county certainly isn't inclined to do anything about it, you know? So what I'm asking is, I would like to see you pass a resolution, okay, that you will not accept the road from the county until they put the stoplights in. Because folks, you just talked about your capital funding for the next five and 10 years here, just a few weeks ago. And so guess who's going to fund those lights? I mean, I know that they all come from Mr. Grant from someplace, but essentially, you know, the city is going to be responsible for that. And, you know, I think we can all agree that it's inevitable, okay, that stoplights and pedestrian crossings are going to go in on those two interchanges. And so my point is, why not do it now? Why not be proactive before we have any of those statistics? Because we all know what statistics mean. They mean that we've had a loss, and in this case, it would be a human loss. So I would appreciate it if you could look into that, and I ask that you pass, you know, some type of motion to force the county to put these in before you take ownership, you know, of that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Last chance. Close the public portion of the meeting, come back to city council. The issue of code enforcement anonymity versus identified complaints has been addressed by city council six months ago, and there was change to the policy requiring under certain circumstances, the complainant must identify themselves, but it was not a universal change. So there still is the possibility for anonymity in certain circumstances. Anybody from council is free to bring that up at any time to see if we want to make further changes. Typically, changes of that nature are based on a significant number of citizen impacts, and so far, we've heard one.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and we also want to give, excuse me.
Hush up.
We also want to give the new ordinance some time so we can measure it before we, you know, go any further and see. So it's only been, like you said, six months, so I think a year or two to see how that works.
I agree. To Mr. McDonald's issue, couldn't agree with you more, especially with your analysis. I remember, I think it was my first or second year on city council, I was approached by members of the Palm Coast Yacht Club urging the city to install a traffic light at the intersection of Florida Park Drive and Palm Harbor Parkway. The complaint that the yacht club had is coming out of their driveway, which is essentially is a hidden driveway, to their left, to the south. So, there still is the possibility for anonymity in certain circumstances. Anybody from council is free to bring that up at any time to see if we want to make further changes. Typically, changes of that nature are based on a significant number of citizen impacts, and so far, we've heard one.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and we also want to give, excuse me.
Hush up.
We also want to give the new ordinance some time so we can measure it before we, you know, go any further and see. So, it's only been, like you said, six months, so I think a year or two to see how that works.
I agree. To Mr. McDonald's issue, couldn't agree with you more, especially with your analysis. I remember, I think it was my first or second year on city council, I was approached by members of the Palm Coast Yacht Club urging the city to install a traffic light at the intersection of Florida Park Drive and Palm Harbor Parkway. The complaint that the yacht club had is coming out of their driveway, which is essentially is a hidden driveway, to their left, to the south was a bridge, people coming over the bridge, didn't have clear visibility. Anyway, make a long story short, we approached DOT, and we were told that a stoplight must meet seven of 10 warrants. One of the warrants was how many accidents there were, and to Mr. McDonald's credit, how many fatalities there were. When I conveyed that to the yacht club, they said, well, how many people do we have to get killed before we can have a stoplight? The issue from the city's point of view, and we've had this conversation with other residents, especially along Bel Air, who have asked for stoplights at certain intersections. The city could install a stoplight, but if we do it without DOT approval, we assume all liability for that. If there's an accident at that intersection, we are responsible. So, it's not something the city can do. Mr. Landen, what I'd like you to do is have our traffic consultant take a look at this issue. I would certainly, I don't know if I want to pass a resolution refusing to take the property from the county. I don't know that that solves anything, other than the fact that it would be the county accumulating the statistics rather than the city. But I would certainly favor a resolution from council to DOT, strongly requesting this. I mean, you look at the other coming off I-95 southbound onto Palm Coast Parkway, there's a traffic signal there. I can't understand why one wouldn't be acceptable at this location.
So, Mayor, I can, I'm, we've already been in communication with FDOT and the county. I can give you a full briefing right now, which would-
Please do.
First of all, Matanzas Woods Parkway is currently a county road, but we do have, already have that interlocal agreement with Flagler County that says after the interchange is complete, that they will turn over the entire length of Matanzas Woods Parkway to the city. But that does not include the interchange. The interchange is a federal highway interchange, and it is owned by the Federal Highway Commission and managed by FDOT. So, that section that is within the federal right-of-way is not getting turned over to the city. It is, it will stay under the jurisdiction of FDOT. I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor, that why you would have an interchange in a city without traffic signals. I was extremely surprised to see the stop signs versus a signal go in at the interchange. We've already had this discussion with our district office. Once Matanzas Woods Parkway is turned over to the city, that's when we will have more influence on the future of that interchange. And I do think that we need to continue that discussion. I can tell you that as a result of some complaints that the county and FDOT has already received, they've already done a second analysis. After they design it and they approve the design, they went back and did a separate analysis as to whether or not the signal warranted any changes, including the, it being signalized. There were some minor changes. I think that's probably when the islands were installed and, but there was no warrant, as they would say, Mayor, as you've indicated, for a signal. They really don't know how much traffic's going to be on it. They really don't know the, you know, they've got their engineer modeling that they try to predict. I think the best approach at this point is, FDOT is not going to do anything with it right now, because they've already looked at it a second time without any traffic on it. We need to move forward with the city obtaining the rest of the right-of-way. Once again, whether we obtain the rest of the right-of-way or not, this portion in the federal highway right-of-way is not coming to the city. And then, keep pushing for the signal to go in. The other misnomer is the city's going to pay for the signal? No, it's, I couldn't see us putting any money into a interchange signal. This is something that the state would definitely take on as their responsibility, just like the signals on US-1. They don't ask us to actually fund any of those signals. This would be another one where county dollars, city dollars will not go into the signal, it will be federal-state highway dollars that would fund the actual signals. Once they meet warrants, those dollars are fairly easy to come by, because when it doesn't meet warrant, then, and they put them in, they're liable, but once it does meet warrants and they don't put them in, then there's a liability issue there too. So, as soon as it meets the warrants, I think the funding will be available. Our, I think our job at the city is just keep pushing for them to get them in as soon as, as soon as they do meet the warrants.
Well, what I would like to see in the interim is communication with the school board. Primary, I would imagine that it's going to be children walking to and from school that are going to be your major pedestrian volumes there. I'd like to approach the school board, get their opinion. They can probably give us a guesstimate of how many children walk that way each day. Then I would like to see a joint resolution from the school board and the City of Palm Coast, and the county if they'd care to join in. Again, putting DOT on notice that this to us is a very, very serious issue.
Yes, and we have been in communication with the school district, and I'm sure that that joint resolution would be very easy with the, with the school district.
Your honor, when we first talked about the changes on Old Kings Road, all of the conversation was centered around the concern that a off-ramp from I-95 would dump traffic in front of Matanzas High School, and we all said that was a bad thing. So, it sounds like we haven't convinced the DOT that it's a bad thing. I'm not here, I understand what Mr. Landen is saying, but we need somebody in the state legislature to light a fire under somebody. We cannot have traffic coming off an interstate highway, flying down the road towards Matanzas High School. That's why we're doing the Old Kings Road extension more than anything else, in my view.
And Palm Harbor to, yes, for the traffic to not be in front of the school and minimize the impact on, on the high school. This is, this interchange is specific to pedestrian traffic, where you have students who are living on the other side of I-95, walking or riding their bicycles to school, which is really the issue at hand here. So, you know, once again, agree totally. I mean, we, we were very surprised and have already started the groundwork. I do think that you're right on target. As elected officials, contacting your state elected officials and expressing concerns make a lot of sense, and that's really where the resolution can come into, to play, to get the elected officials' attention, which then can hopefully get the DOT staff's attention.
With council concurrence, I will write a letter on behalf of city council to the chairman of the school board, asking them to join us in a joint resolution. In the meantime, let us contract our elected representatives, our senator, and push for this. I think it's, I don't like the alternative of accumulating enough negative statistics to, how many kids do you have to hit with a car before you can have a traffic?
Well, it sounds like there's a minor contest here as to who's responsible for what and who's going to do what, and it needs to be clarified for the sake of the students that are going to Matanzas High School, and anything at any level that we can do, we should do. I have spoken.
Council okay with that?
Yep.
We will pursue it. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Ms. Vice Mayor, why don't we start with you?
I do have two things. One is on the, at the bus stops that we have, that we're going to put the three bus stops, that people have suggested we put garbage cans there, because that's probably going to be someplace that a lot of the parents bring their kids to if there's an actual bus stop, but seeing we know that's a busy spot, and we have the problem with the garbage, just to put one there, just a suggestion. The second thing is Fernhill Lane. Palm Harbor and at the end of Old Kings where Forest Grove comes in, all the traffic is going down Fernhill Lane. We've, we've tried to stop the traffic with city workers, the big trucks going down there. The road is, is a very narrow road, it's about 20 feet wide, and it's very winding, and it's set at 30 miles an hour like most of the residential streets. This street, if you are going down it and it's, nobody's on the street, 30 miles an hour when you hit those turns, is a bit much for this street. But right now, because all the traffic coming from Palm Harbor is being directed down there, they're having problems, which we've been addressing right along, but the, when I went over there the other day, I've made about 10 trips over there. The last time I went there, there were four different residents from different houses there, and their concern is the speed the people are going. We did, Commander Carmen did send down someone to do a speed check, and they're doing the 30 miles an hour. The problem is that with the amount of traffic, 30 miles an hour is just too fast. So, I had suggested that we reduce it temporarily, put up a temporary sign that says 15 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, have a COP in the morning and in the afternoon, just to let them see a police presence there, and possibly it would resolve it. Mr. Carmen, Commander Carmen did say he was going to send them over today, but without the change in the speed limit, they're really just watching cars go by, there's nothing for them to enforce. We even have something that says no through traffic, we had two signs there, those signs have been turned upside down, so it doesn't say it's not for through traffic anymore. But if you stand there on the corner, there is a car every second turning the corner, it's just constant cars coming down, and people have been hurt. Front lawns have been driven on, mailboxes have been tipped over. While I was there, there was a kid on a bicycle who had to get out of the way because there was two cars coming down. One was a Flagler bus, and the other one was a pickup truck with lawn equipment on it, and he couldn't get out of the way. So, I know that Sean went out there and did a traffic study and said, you know, that he does see what the problem is, but it's going to be over March 28th, and I just don't want to go back and tell these people, just wait it out. I think they need something there before something bad happens. And that's my dilemma.
So, we're looking at a March 28th?
Mm-hmm, is supposedly when it's going to be done. And I'm not sure people will stop going down that road, but right now, it's a very, very busy road in the mornings and late afternoon, people coming home from work, they're all cutting down that way, and the people there can't get any relief from it. I mean, it's just constant, but the worst during those hours. So, what I would like is just a temporary sign there, just until the construction's over.
I would not be opposed to a construction speed zone implemented.
I wouldn't either if it comports with state law, right?
Yeah, we, I know I have discussions, Ms. Shipley brought this up to me late last week, and I've had conversations, and I know Sean went out there yesterday afternoon. I actually drove out there also yesterday afternoon. The good news is, is I was out there 6:00, 6:30, and they were, they were still working, and they've been working seven days a week now. So, they are trying real hard to meet their March 28th deadline, and it looks like they will. They're, they're actually laying base, so that's very good news. I talked to Sean about construction zone temporary speed limit. I think Ms. Shipley's correct, though, that speed isn't nearly the issue as it is the volume of traffic on that residential street. That's really where the, and the only solution to that is get Palm Harbor back open. We're also going to take a look at temporarily doing close to through traffic to try to change people's behavior once it's open, because once people-
Not ready.
No, I'm saying, once it's open, so that they go back to using Palm Harbor and not using this residential street as, as a cut through, to get people used to using the Palm Harbor again after it's open. So, there's some things we can do there to, once again, try to make sure that after Palm Harbor is open into this month, that we get people on the streets they're supposed to be on, not Fernhill and other detours. So, I, I think a construction zone speed limit, it's, it's not going to solve their, the real problem, but if that makes them feel better at this point, really the thing we need to do is just get Palm Harbor back open.
But I think if you have the temporary speed limit and people go down and they see a COP sitting there, they might say, well, I don't want to go that way, it's not going to save me much time, and they'll be discouraged from going down there right now.
Okay.
Worth a try.
Yep.
Ms. Shipley?
That's it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wire?
I'd like to see an agenda item somewhere down the road, be it a workshop or a meeting. I'd like to hear from the school board on the idea that they're working with Jason DiLorenzo on as far as bus stops. And as I said last week, my biggest concern is not the viability of the pads that are going to go down, but whether or not the kids are going to use them. And I want to know what the school board is going to do to try to get some education out there of why it's not a good idea to stand or lay down in the middle of the street when it's dark waiting for your school bus. So, I'd like to see something on that. I also, Jason's not here, but I, I would like to talk about slabs that are portable, you know, and there are ways of doing this, of, you know, Public Works puts them down, and then if we decided to move them somewhere else, they're not permanently embedded in the, in the swale, because they, it could be problematic going down the road, especially in light of the fact that the school board changes where the bus stops are every year for many of the stops. So, but that's, that's something that I'd like to see more discussion on. I like the idea, I'm just not sure how well it's going to be utilized. That's all I have, your honor.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Well, we're finished in Tallahassee for now. Two, two matters that, one of the, several of the matters that we've been following did not, did not go forward. I guess one, one good and one bad, then. We've had some, some interest from folks here in the city about that bill that they called the fracking bill, and that filed, failed in committee, so that did not go forward. So, so that's good news. But arguably for local governments, the other bill that we've been watching closely, which had to do with public records and trying to minimize some of the abuses that have, that have gone on out there against especially smaller cities out there in the state of Florida, that, that bill did not pass either, but hopefully it will come up next year and some of these problems can be resolved. And of course, there's a lot of other things. We'll see which ones the governor signs, but there's, there's, some of the, the real problematic potential legislation with regard to preemption did not go through this year. So, so that was, that was a good sign, and I think we have, can thank the League of Cities and others for that.
If I gaze into my crystal ball, as you just did, I can assure you that preemption will be back on their agenda next year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They are not going to stop taking local rule away from local government.
Correct. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
First, it's election day. Just a reminder to everybody that hasn't voted during early voting or absentee ballot, today's your last day for the presidential primary here in Florida. Also, tonight is Food Truck Tuesday, it's becoming extremely popular. The beneficiary of tonight's proceeds will be the Recreation Summer Camp Scholarship Program, and I think anybody that's been out knows it's a, it's actually a good time, so hopefully everybody can come out. It starts at 5:00 and goes till 8:00, right, right here at Central Park. They've tried to put it on Park Street, and I think that worked very well last time, where we don't have to deal with the weather in case it rains and the mud that people have to walk in. So, a little, little different setup, but worked very well last time. Also, this is a five-month Tuesday, if that makes sense? So, no council meeting?
Day, month.
Five Tuesday, month. I didn't, when I said it, it didn't sound right.
Nice try.
So, next, five-month Tuesday, okay. The, so next week, there is no council meeting or workshop. The next workshop would be the 29th, Tuesday, the 29th, so between now and then is Easter, and we have our Easter egg hunt, what they call extravaganza here at Central Park, Saturday, the 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00. That's for the little ones. And they've been, had a successful teenage egg hunt with flashlights Friday night, the Friday night before that, the 25th, to do a little something for teenagers, and I guess that's been successful in past years too, so little things to look forward to. Mayor, oh, and, and just, I gave you the update on the Palm Harbor Parkway, that is moving right along. Wanted to also let you know that the Bulldog Drive, no, let me get it right, Boulder Rock Drive, canal crossing, where we're going to actually have to detour the traffic- Drive, canal crossing, where we're going to actually have to detour the traffic. We had our neighborhood meeting last night, and that will get started very, very soon, this week or next week. The contractor will be mobilizing and be starting to install the little detour around the current bridge, so that we can tear out the culverts and, and replace them before they blow out, and it's the only way in and out of that neighborhood, so this one is one of those that we had to get in front of, because if it blew out, you'd have people not be able to get in and out of there for some time. That's all the updates I have, Mayor.
Maybe on that project, we can use Ms. Shipley's construction zone signs when they're done at Palm Harbor and move them there.
There you go. Yep. Got, got a lot of those around town, yes.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Adjourn.
We stand adjourned.[1768.26]